Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special town meeting. My name is James Kane, and I have the privilege of serving as your moderator this evening. To ensure good order, the tellers, please raise your hands. All town meeting members should be seated in front of the tellers with your town meeting member sticker prominently displayed. Only elected members of town meetings should be on the downslope side of the tellers unless specifically provided with such access. Please also recall that town meeting members recognized to speak should state their name and precinct, and we would ask that, in order to ensure that your colleagues all have the opportunity to speak, please limit one question and a follow-up. Rest assured, we'll come back and get you. It's my pleasure to introduce those seated to my right and left. Sharon Thomas, Town Clerk, to my immediate right. Town Council, Steve Madouse. Assistant Town Manager for Community Development and Human Services, Kristin Lass. Finance and Administration Assistant Town Manager, Mary Thompson. And your Finance Committee. I'd like to ask Vikram to introduce himself and his colleagues.
I am Vikram Chabra, Chair of the Board. To my right, in the order, I will introduce the other members of the Board. Carlos Garcia, Vice Chair. Dennis O'Connell, Clerk. Lena Polito. Milind Konitkar. Diana Bowley. Brian Ganger. And last but not least, James Flynn.
Thank you. To my left, our Town Manager, Kevin Mizikar. And Board of Selectmen Chair, Mo DiPaolo. Mo, would you please introduce your colleagues?
To my left is Vice Chair, Cassavant. To her left is our Clerk, Teresa Flynn. To her left is Michelle Conlon. And to her left is John Samia.
Thank you. With the introductions complete, let's take a moment to recognize an impressive career. For years, a talented professional sat behind the curtain to my left during the annual town meeting and kept careful track of any financial motions made during that town meeting. That was typical of Mary Thompson, performing her duties professionally and without notice. Mary Thompson joined our town in 1986 as Town Accountant and served in that role through June of 2021. On July 1 of 2021, Mary was promoted to her present position of Assistant Town Manager for Budget and Finance. She will retire from town service on October 28 of this month. Mr. Mizikar, would you like to add anything?
As the Moderator stated, Mary Thompson's career working for you, the residents of this great town, has been phenomenal. Her tenure with the town since November 17, 1986, is an incredible length of service. I know in her head right now, Mary is screaming at me that town meeting is a business meeting, Mr. Manager, please move on.[204.01][204.01](Laughter). We don't have time for things like this, so I will be brief. Government officials and positions like Mary has held only make headlines when they mess up or act inappropriately. Therefore, Mary Thompson has not been in the paper. Consider this: It's estimated that at least $2,608,000,000 have passed her desk in the last 36 years. That's a billion with a B. $2,608,000,000. Each expenditure has been thoroughly scrutinized under her watch. Despite that volume of work and responsibility, there has never been a single material weakness found in Mary's work by an outside auditor. I rate Mary's work AAA, and ask that you join me in a AAA recognition of her service.[252.15][252.15](Applause).
Congratulations, Mary, and let us get underway with the business meeting. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag as we open our meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Town Clerk has advised me that we have a quorum, and our special town meeting for 2022 is gavelled into session. I have examined the warrant and the constable's return of service, and both are in order. I ask for your unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return. Hearing no objection, it will be voted unanimously. Onto the town meeting warrant. We have 13 articles this evening. We thought the number was sufficiently small to avoid the questions of bundling. Mr. DiPaolo, Article 1.
I move the printed motion under Article 1.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article 1 by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, an explanation.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this article simply reduces the amount of time that a dog owner has to redeem an animal that's found in the possession of the town that we're unable to locate the owner, from 10 days to seven days. After that time period, we partner with the Worcester Animal Rescue League for the animal to be seen by a vet and put up for adoption. That is the one change, reducing the holding period from 10 days to seven days.
Prior to asking if there are any comments with reference to Article 1, there are two mics, one at the end of either hall, or I should say... Who would you call that, Sharon?
Isle.
Isle. If that is difficult for you, just raise your hand, and some wonderful person from SPAC will run a microphone to you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Ms. O'Connor.
I do not have a dog, but I wanted to be sure that the Animal Rescue League is a no-kill shelter.
Mr. Mizikar, response?
I don't know if they're formally a no-kill shelter or not.
Is the dog officer around? I don't see or hear him.
So, should I continue with my question?
Sure, why not?
Okay, so, is there a process where they work to place the dog right away?
Yes.
And I suggest that maybe you could take advantage of Facebook or whatever people use and put mugshots of the dog on when it's found? And I guess that's all my questions, but I really am concerned that it's no-kill. If not, I would suggest that you find a no-kill shelter. That's all.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Judy.
I am a dog owner. Just thought I'd add that. I guess my questions really are, is what steps do you take to attempt to identify whether the dog has an owner or not? And the other question that I have is, the seven days, is that inclusive of weekends and holidays? Because my concern is with reducing the amount of time if it's over a holiday or weekend, and if an owner's going to have enough time... I mean, they could be away, and we see that with dogs getting out, and they don't realize for a few days because someone else is taking care of them. And so, again, what steps are we taking to identify as well?
Thank you.
First and foremost, if a dog is registered and tagged, that's pretty easy, so that's part of the town bylaws itself. We would immediately locate the owner if that was the case. The Worcester Animal Rescue League has the ability to read the chips, so if a dog's chipped, we would pursue that. We do post to the town and police Facebook page, as necessary, to try to let the community know. Seven days or 10 days is inclusive of holidays and weekends. It's based on the number of nights that the dog is in, once we bring them, or once we bring the animal to the rescue league, so it doesn't exclude holidays or weekends. So, that is what we do to attempt to find the owner. It's not our intention to take any animal there and not reunite it with its family.
Follow-up?
Yes. I guess my concern is that unfortunately, there are dogs that get out, and they don't have a collar on. So, I agree with you, if they've got the collar on, it's an easy way to identify them. I do think people should chip their dogs, but they don't always keep the information up to date, so just because a dog's got a chip doesn't mean it's going to get back to the rightful owner. I don't really think that we should go ahead and pass this. I think 10 days would give people more time. I mean, what is the cost for us to house the dog per day?
It's $25 a night.
So, and about how many dogs in a year do we fall into finding, and that you have to keep them for up to 10 days?
I don't know if the chief is aware of that answer. I don't...
Answer forthcoming.
Yeah, Chief... Oh, sorry. Chief Anderson here. I don't have a number on that. If I was to guess, I would say somewhere between 10 and 20, but they usually get returned within a day or two.
So, it doesn't look like we have many dogs that are staying in the town's care for 10 days, and the fact that we don't have the answer on whether the shelter we're working with is a no-kill shelter, I'd ask town meeting members to defeat this article. Thank you.
Further comments or questions regarding Article 1? Please come down.
Kathy McSweeney, Precinct 8. I don't know the answer to whether Worcester is no-kill or kill, but Section 151A goes into great detail on how dogs will be euthanized, and it talks about administration of arbituits or gunshot in case of emergency. So, I'm an opposition of aligning ourselves with 151A because it does speak specifically about euthanizing dogs. I also, I think, seven days is too soon for the reasons Mrs. Vetter just outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Yes.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct 7. And the Worcester Animal Rescue League is a no-kill shelter, so I think that's helpful for everyone when you're trying to vote.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Yes.
Shannon Wall, Precinct 7. Out of curiosity, I'm wondering why we're proposing to move if most dogs are returned within one to two days already.
Mr. Mizikar.
It's just aligning to the general laws to reduce the total potential cost to the town. You know, yeah, that's it.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Mr. Byrne. Stay right there.
Hi, Kevin. Did you hear that? Kevin Byrne, Precinct 6. Just to confirm what the nice lady just said, the Worcester Animal Rescue League is a non-kill shelter. We have a little bit of personal experience with this. My daughter Melissa, who lost her dog many, many years, just six or seven months ago, found the Worcester Animal Rescue, and they have the most caring and concerned people who work up there, who do everything they possibly can to find the original owners of the dogs, chips, and any other way that they can do it. And they have a wonderful, wonderful service. She adopted a beautiful little dog, two years old. He runs around too much, and he barks too much, but I used to do the same thing, Mr. Moderator.[874.51][874.51](Laughter). So, that's a good place for us to send these dogs.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Yes.
Hi, Carissa Ford, Precinct 3. A comment, since this is being presented to us as a reduction in unnecessary kenneling fees, I believe we should have been presented with the numbers of what those fees currently are, the number of dogs on average, and an actual estimate of what money would be saved since this is being presented to us as a financial matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 1? Not hearing or seeing any further comments or questions. This requiring a majority vote, I will now move to calling the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
I'm going to say the noes have it. Article 2, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article 2.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article 2 by a vote of 6 to 0.
Mr. Mizikar, Article 2.
Article 2 seeks to change the maximum fine that would be issued to someone who parks in a restricted handicap parking space from $100 to $300, which is the state maximum for that fine. The current $100 fine has been in place since the early 1990s. We have been working with the Commission on Disabilities, and upon the increase in this fee, the Board of Selectmen will consider the establishment of a 22G parking fund and depositing funds into that on an annual basis, which would be generated from the increase in these fines. Those dollars would be dedicated to removing handicap barriers throughout the community at the discretion of the Commission on Disabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to Article 2? Mr. McGee is rather aggressive with his stance this evening.[1012.44][1012.44](Laughter). Good evening, Dale.
Dale McGee, Precinct 5. I'm opposed to this for two reasons. And first of all, I've never parked in a handicap space, so we'll start there now. I'm not planning on it anytime soon. But I feel that necessary processes and procedures within the community should be funded through the regular rolls and not depend upon fines. If it's important, we should be doing it that way. We shouldn't have a source that is not secure. We should not put in place perverse incentives for depending on people breaking the law. The second reason is that fines should be deterrents, and they should be proportional to other fines. And in Shrewsbury right now, the person can park in front of a fire hydrant, they can double park, they can obstruct a public building. There are a whole list of things that are pretty significant and disruptive for $25. We currently have a $100 fee, and it already reflects the seriousness that we feel that we're dealing with. I do not feel that raising it to 300 is necessary. We are not dealing with an epidemic of people who are doing this. The current rate of issuing these fines is one fine every one or two weeks. So, it is not as though we have an outbreak of this that is occurring that needs to be corrected. And finally, if we want this to be a deterrent, then we should post what the fine is. And currently, our handicap spaces do not list what the fine is, so whether it's $100 or $1,000, the person isn't going to know it until they've already broken the law. So, I'm opposed to this.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 2? Looking for a fresh face before we double back. Well, Donna O'Connor.
This is a fresh...
I'll get her the next time.
Donna O'Connor, Precinct 2. I feel like Negative Nellie, but I think it's great that you're going to raise it to $300, because we put it at $100 many years ago because we wanted people to feel the bite, and I don't think people feel the bite, and I think it's disgusting when people park in handicap spaces, especially if you're watching people needing that space, trying to struggle to get into the buildings. I do have a question as to why not having the money go to the general fund, because I really think it's a bad idea for us to keep farming committees and then having money go to the committee to spend instead of through the process of going to the general fund and having the town manage that.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, do I make a response?
The split between the local receipts or the general fund and the amount that would go into the trust fund would be established by the Board of Selectmen, so we should just think it's a good ear mark for a good cause.
Mr. Byrne.
Kevin Byrne from Precinct 6 again. This is the first time in the history of this town meeting that I've ever disagreed with Dr. McGee, but this is always a first time. Just a little bit of institutional memory. Mr. Moderator, I stood where you're standing now in 1984, which was the actual year that we first increased the fee from $25 to $100. At the time this got put on the warrant, it was a warrant article like this is, I was playing racquetball three times a week. I was substantially younger than I am now, and when this thing came up, the reason it came up is that there was a wonderful town meeting member who has subsequently passed away. His name was Charlie Latino. Some of the old folks may remember Charlie. Charlie was a friend, he was a client, he was a town meeting member. He was very outspoken. He was Italian, and his language was colloquial. And he came to that town meeting, and let me tell you, he went up and down the whole situation. And this was 1984, in which in all candor, this then-younger guy playing racquetball didn't have a clue about handicap parking spaces, didn't have a clue about cutting curbs and sidewalks or anything of that nature, and the rest of it, he said, "Well, okay, there we go." And Charlie and a bunch of folks said, "Yeah, this is a problem." Subsequent since 1984, you know, we've developed so many handicapped accessible places and things, little buttons that we can place, that we can push to get into the town hall and to get into the TV bank and the rest of it. And anyway, Charlie made the speech, and it passed, and there it was for a whole bunch of years. A bunch of years ago, when all of a sudden the left leg kind of got messed up just a tad, and I got this piece of equipment that has a couple wheels on it and the rest of it, all of a sudden, this stupid Irishman became aware of how much need there was for people who have handicaps, okay? And candidly, you don't know how many times I have experienced in the last three or four years. We have a place down the Cape, and every morning when we're down the Cape, I go to the Cumberland Farms. There's three handicap spaces in front of the Cumberland Farms. I usually pull in the one, the other, maybe there's another one, but there's always a third one. And I'm always watching two young guys in a pickup truck with their baseball caps on backwards who leap out of those trucks and the rest of it. And I just peek around, there's no sticker, there's no license on it, and it happens quite, quite frequently. Do I do anything about it? No. I'm not going to go up to the guys with the baseball caps on back and say, "Hey, you know, get out of the parking space." This is a way, candidly, as Donna O'Connor has suggested, that you make people aware of the necessity for these things. And I guess the way I became aware of it is having to walk through a parking spot, through a parking space to a parking lot with this piece of metal that I'm pushing around with it. I think this is a good idea. Maybe it's not a good idea what Dr. McGee suggests, is we say, "Hey, this is a $300 I'm very much in favor of this, as Charlie was back in 1984 when he was disabled, and I ask my brothers and sisters to support this.
Further comments or questions regarding Article 2? Charlie Garabedian.
When a sign says "No parking," that is very absolute, no parking. If fire hydrants are a concern, then maybe we should increase the fees on fire hydrant parking as well, or anything else. When something is absolute, I think it makes sense to anybody that has an automobile license not to park your car there. $300, I think, is not much money today. I would suggest a couple of things. Number one, have that minimum rate set at 400 or 500. And I'm serious about this, not just about the handicap, but any other illegal parking. Is there a limit as to how high you can set a fine? If there is, then let's go to that limit. Additionally, if people continue to park illegally, then I think maybe we should have a scale that would escalate that fine from $400 on the first offense, then maybe $500 on the second offense, and just keep on going upward. And I'm not saying this for the town, just to raise money. I'm saying this to have a respect for people that need handicap parking. I think it is a shame that individuals that have licenses cannot act, adults cannot act responsibility and live up to the code of that license they are holding. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Delgado.
Deb Delgado, Precinct A. I think we should vote in favor of this. I'm on the Commission for Disabilities, and we did some research on this, and going from 100 to 300 is very close to the inflation rate. If you look at what $100 was when this was raised to 100 versus today for 300. Also, there are many towns in Massachusetts that do have the 300 rate. We did research that. But the main thing is, if you've ever had to take someone to a doctor's appointment, and you have a handicap parking sticker, and you can't find one, and you have to figure out how in heaven's name you're going to get... It was my dad, I had to take him to a doctor appointment. I couldn't until someone moved because he could not walk alone, so I couldn't even leave him at the curb. So, there's lots of reasons, and he didn't have a wheelchair or anything like that, but he couldn't walk because of his heart, so he didn't even look like he had a handicap. So, we're thinking of that, so, you know, there are more accessibility when someone goes to doctor's appointment, grocery store, wherever you're going, that you can have that need taken care of. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Yes.
Martha Deering, Precinct 4. I have been since the early 1980s a state-licensed rehabilitation counselor and a nationally certified rehabilitation counselor. Our job is to work with people with disabilities. In the early 1980s, we had so little compliance with people obeying handicapped parking spaces that one of my disciplines actually developed stickers that we would put under windshield wipers, say stupidity is not a disability. It has improved since that time, but I do think that it is time for more people to pay attention to this. I'm one of those people who has a handicap sticker now. I didn't used to, but I do now. Don't have to use it every day, but when I do, I really need to be able to be that close. I strongly urge that we vote in favor of this particular article.
Thank you very much. Yes. Yes.
Bernie Farletta, Precinct One. Just for a point of information, how many citations have been given over the past year for people illegally parking in a handicap zone? And of those, how many of them are repeat offenders?
Justin Dobson.
Oh, go right ahead.
Justin Dobson, answer this.
Hold on one second. Justin, I understand you have the answer to that question. Please identify yourself and your position.
Good evening. My name is Justin Dobson. I'm the Cemetery Program Manager and I provide staff support to the Commission on Disabilities. The data I collected from FY 2008 to FY 2020 shows an average of 33 tickets a year. In consulting with Chief of Police Kevin Anderson, the three-year average over the last three years is closer to 30 per year. Chief, do we have info on repeat offenders?
No.
Okay, we don't have that of it.
Thank you. Bernie, follow up?
Follow up comment. Perhaps one of the issues people talk about in terms of finding a handicap parking space is that there aren't enough of them out there. Perhaps we should be considering expanding the number since the need for handicap parking spaces seems to be growing. I would suggest that that be looked at. Finally, I would suggest that also that if there is a fine, that it should be posted on the handicap sign, indicating what the fine will be to notify the people that that's what they will be fined for if they illegally park in that space. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bernie. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Two? Just a second, sir. Are you a town meeting member? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Robert Cray, yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I couldn't see your sticker. Okay, come on down and ask you a question, Mr. Cray.
Robert Cray, Precinct Two. I must be from the poor part of town because I still think that $100 is a lot of money. Okay? I don't know if anybody's gone into a house and picked up a 90-year-old off the floor and decided they needed to go to the hospital instead of taking ambulance or to a doctor's office or to a restroom pit stop. You know, sometimes people have to park in any space they can get when you have senior parents. And I respect these anecdotes about people in need finding filled spaces, but what we don't know is whether those spaces were filled by other patients with critical handicap needs. So I would second the doctor's original comments, Dr. McGee. Apparently, he's thought this through very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article Two? Not seeing any, and this requiring a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Two shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Three, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Three.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Three by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
Article Three seeks to establish a penalty of $300 for violating the town's tree bylaw. Whenever this bylaw was originally passed at the May of 2022 town meeting, the town had cited a $500 offense for violating this bylaw. Upon Attorney General's review, the maximum fine permissible is $300. We're seeking to add a penalty clause since the Attorney General struck our violations and penalty clause in its entirety.
Thank you. Commissar, questions with reference to Article Three? I'm not seeing any. Therefore, we will call the vote on Article Three. Simple majority. All those in favor of Article Three shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Four, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Four.
Second.
Article Four having been moved in second, and Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Four by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
Article Four seeks a few changes to the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Since the passage of the annual operating budget in May, a few things have happened that has brought forth additional revenue. Those things include the development of a firmer new growth number. New growth is any new real property that's developed within the community from January 1st through June 30th of the calendar year. Since town meeting, $575,000 in new growth has been identified. That's primarily part of the ongoing construction that you see at the Edgemere Project on Route 20. The second matter that contributes to the additional revenue is $268,040 in state aid on the revenue side and a net reduction in charges of $23,308. So in total, the difference in available revenue from where we were in May is $866,348. Through various articles, including this one this evening, we propose to use some of those funds. Through this article, there are eight different adjustments that we're seeking to make to the budget. Two of them include using part of these new dollars. The first is adding $75,000 to the reserve fund, which is managed by the Finance Committee, to help town departments overcome unexpected and unforeseen financial challenges throughout the course of the year. The reason we're proposing this $75,000 increase is because of the stronger-than-usual inflationary pressures that we're seeing across a number of different departments as we seek to acquire goods and services. Some of those areas include, but are not limited to, utility costs and fuel costs for departmental operations. The second area where we seek to use a portion of the $866,000 is $106,937.50 to cover an interest payment in May of 2023 on the final borrowing for the police station and public safety radio project. Now, these funds are able to technically be raised through the excluded levy, where we'd be able to increase taxes more than Proposition Two and a half would permit. However, the Board of Selectmen has directed the use of funds within the tax levy to keep the tax rate lower and to keep property tax bills lower. So we're seeking to use these funds within the levy limit. The balance of the adjustments, the final six, are transfers among various departments. Town meeting members are familiar that you set bottom line restrictions in personnel costs and operating expenses within every department. And town departments are not allowed to move funds between those two different categories. However, department heads have identified situations where they need to move funds and we're proposing several of those this evening, within the Public Buildings Department, within various aspects of the Department of Public Works for fleet maintenance, and within the Library Department.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Four? I'm not seeing any. This requires a majority vote, so we'll move to the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Five, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Five.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Five by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
We are seeking to add $47,810 into the general stabilization fund using the taxation that I previously identified during the discussion of Article Four.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Five? Not seeing any, this requiring a majority vote. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Six, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Six.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Six by a vote of seven to zero.
Comments or questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Mizuka.
Article Six seeks the use of $7,100 to match a $25,400 state earmark that was secured by Representative Kane and Senator Moore, which would provide for enhanced physicals and body scans of firefighters to further document their medical conditions as a baseline to compare for future uses, especially with higher rates potentially within the fire service for various types of chronic disease.
Questions or comments with reference to this article? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Seven, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed article, printed motion under Article Seven.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
Seek the use of $20,000 in taxation to use and supplement insurance funds to replace a totaled police cruiser. There's two reasons that we need additional funds beyond the insurance that was, insurance funds that were received. One is because we insure our police cruisers because of their short life at actual cash value and not replacement costs in order to save on our insurance premium. And second, the new vehicles that we are purchasing are hybrid vehicles and this was an internal, traditional internal combustion. The cost of the hybrid is higher, so we're seeking $20,000 to supplement the insurance funds to replace this cruiser.
Questions or comments with reference to Article Seven? Article Seven, not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll move to a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eight, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Eight.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
Article Eight seeks the use of $33,500 for a unified dispatching and operations study. Currently, police dispatch and fire dispatch are separate operations with fire being dispatched from fire headquarters and police out of the current police facility. With the construction of the new police station on Maple Avenue, we're seeking, we have built enough space to have a unified dispatch center and seeking to combine operations between police and fire for a more unified response. We are seeking the use of a consultant to both establish the appropriate number of staffing in total on individual shifts and to establish a governance model that will serve both police and fire operations equally and fully. As one can imagine, police and fire dispatch are two completely different animals within the same profession. And we believe that using this study to establish a standalone governance model will serve the community the best.
Questions or comments with reference to Article Eight? Article Eight, yes, Dina.
Dina Nichols, Precinct Seven. This is somewhat of a general question, but would the consultants have been factored into any of the prior budgeting for the new police station, the new safety station? And the reason I ask is I feel as though we're voting on a lot of shifting of money from account to account this year. And every year at this time, we do something similar oftentimes, but it just seems like there's, in terms, one of the prior articles, and I'll shift back for a second. When we went through the various accounts, we were moving, say, $200,000, $50,000 here, $17,000 here, $18,000 here. Does that leave a gap on, within the departments that we're moving from? So I'm just thinking about the future. You know, we're here now and we're moving the funds around, but are we creating, are we doing this because we're, as you said, things are costing more than we expected? So we're going to find ourselves looking to fill those gaps later on. So just trying to get comfortable with the, A, so the question about would the consultant have been factored into the prior budget for the new building? And secondly, just the idea of shifting around is just, feels like it's a little bit more this year than usual, so any thoughts on that?
Mr. Mizuka.
With regards to whether it should have been included in the debt service, no. I don't feel that it's, would fall under the appropriate use of funds that we would borrow and pay interest for and could incur debt for under the general law, so no, I don't think it should have been included there. We are not leaving any budget short in prior articles. For instance, if you look at public buildings, we are going to have junior custodians perform certain level of activities and instead we're hiring a private contracting firm to do that work. So it's really moving funds from what our original intention was, from using staff to do that work, to having an outside body do it. So we're not setting up shortfalls in any budget. I don't think we're doing this any more than normal, but perhaps as we move forward, as the budget continues to grow, complexities present themselves. We're spending $175 million a year as an organization to run the town government. There's going to be changes from time to time. So we attempt to minimize them. This is just a fraction of the budget. But for this article, I don't feel that we would have been able to borrow these funds under a 20-year debt service model.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Eight? Further comments or questions? Yes.
Hi, Carissa Ford, Precinct Three. Will the consultant, considering the standard operating procedures and practices and appropriate staffing levels, be taking into consideration culturally responsive practices, translation needs, and overall the needs of our community as it's growing and becoming more diverse?
Mr. Mizuka.
Yes, so the consultant will use best practices not only on how, but who we serve. They'll have full access to all the call records and call volume from police, fire, and emergency medical calls over the period of time they deem most appropriate. And they'll develop a solution for us that would include translation services, call takers, dispatchers, whatever it is to meet the needs of the community.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article Eight? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call the vote. Simple majority required. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Nine, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Nine.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Nine by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
This article seeks the use of $185,000 to supplement funds that were put into a previous capital improvement plan. This will allow us to upgrade the HVAC system at the floral school, replacing a 25-year-old equipment. Rather than replacing it in kind, we will be using a fully electrified heat pump system, which will be more efficient and have lower utility costs.
Questions or comments with reference to Article Nine? Article Nine. Not hearing or seeing any, we'll move, wait a second, I'm sorry, I guess I missed a, yes, yes, please.
Robert Cray from Precinct Two again. Following on what Mrs. Nichols was saying, I think this is a big miss. I mean, prices on HVAC equipment are fairly predictable. A lot of stuff is made in China. The American dollar's strong and it's actually buying more right now than in the past. So I'd like a little more information before we could approve such a large variance in that or put it back out to bid.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Nine? I got you. Further comments or questions, Article Nine? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll go to a vote. Simple majority. All those in favor of Article Nine will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Ten, Mr. DiPaolo.
I move the printed motion under Article Ten.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Ten by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
This project seeks the use of $100,000 to fund a primary address table system. This project addresses internal challenges and inefficiencies for many town departments, including but not limited to police, fire, planning, building, assessors, and the Department of Public Works. The system will standardize address creation, automate information sharing, allow departments to more efficiently track and maintain information. It's all driven through a common address system. Many departments have strict statutory requirements and as lots are divided. And as lots are divided, streets are renumbered and different types of units are being constructed throughout the community where there's subaddresses within each lot. This is becoming a growing need and challenge internally. There will also be external facing benefits, especially when it comes to public safety and developing a best practices system on how streets are named and coordinated in the future.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 10? Comments or questions on Article 10? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll go to a vote. Simple majority required. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. Article 11, Mr. DePaulo.
I move the printed motion under Article 11.
Second.
Finance committee.
Moderator, the finance committee recommends the passage of Article 11 by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
Article 11 seeks the use of $200,000 to allow us to move from conceptual level designs to full construction and permitting for the expansion of a cemetery burial area within the community at 65 Prospect Street. As everyone's likely familiar, Mountain View Cemetery only has roughly 180 unsold plots. Given that plots are only being sold on immediate need, that is, they're only being sold for someone who, who has passed away but does not yet own a lot, who is qualified as a town resident, that gives us about three to five years' worth of availability within the current cemetery. The plan at 65 Prospect Street is to construct a number of burial plots that would provide for 50 years' worth of burials and potentially allow the cemetery commission to open it back up for more planning and non-immediate need lot sales. A portion of, this is only a portion of the land, which is depicted on many maps that are included with what was mailed to town meeting members and are available in the lobby this evening. It encompasses approximately 23 acres and does include features that will enhance and complement the area that's used for passive recreation of Prospect Park right now. Those enhancements will include parking and trail connectivity. This is not a clear-cut type plan, is a more naturally set environment, allowing many mature trees to stay and provide a comfort area for both folks to grieve, visit their past loved ones, and provide for passive recreation.
Comments or questions to reference to Article 12? Mr. Molina. I'm sorry, Article 11, pardon me. Article 11.
Jason Molina, precinct one. Two questions. One is, and of course, I want to thank you that this is, the plan is going to be this green, integrated space, so that's, that's really awesome about that. Will the design plans encompass looking at this from, I hate to just say it, but I'll just say it, from a water contamination perspective as well? I know, looking at other research online, that other countries, I couldn't find anything at EPA specifically, but I did see where other countries looked at burials that are how many feet from the water table, how many feet from private wells? You know, because we don't, we also want to be concerned about people using private wells if there are any still for the drinking or for the irrigation process, or whether reverse infiltration into their septic, if anybody has septic within a geographic region from this, because as we know, you know, this is a, is a hill, right? And so, you know, collection moves downhill, so will that be factored into the design?
Mr. Mizuka.
I have to defer to DPW director or program cemetery manager.
DPW director, would you please come forward?
Jeff Howland, DPW director. First, all the burials are in sealed caskets. But the, the architect that we, landscape architect that we are looking at for this project is a specialist in cemetery design. So, they are well aware of any of those considerations for groundwater. Now, we do not have any wells in that area that we're aware of, and there's no septic systems within that area.
All right, follow up to that question? Certainly, okay, so it's not just encapsulated, right, there's, I don't want to get graphic about it, but there's more than to worry about than just sealed caskets, so my concern would be is there are, if you're looking at the plan, there are some, looks like water features that are in, on the plot plan, so I think, I don't think none of us here are an expert about it, so I just think this is something to be cautious about as we contract out with the, with the expert to say, hey, you know, you're on a slope, you've got water features here, where does that water go? Does that land up in anybody downstream that does have a private well? To be concerned about their water safety. And then the second part to that is, what would be the venue to express an interest in having, promoting a different plan of how many burials can happen in a single plot? So, let's say, if you, if the community wanted to push an idea of saying, hey, instead of having two urns in one plot, have family plots, you know, eight, 10, whatever, increase in that size, so you're taking more advantage of that one lot, as opposed to being limited by, you know, paying for one? What's the venue to communicate that interest?
Mr. Mizuka.
Locally, it would be the Parks and Cemetery Commission. I'm sure there are state general laws that may come into play, but that would be done through the Parks and Cemetery Commission here in town.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Yes? Mr. Cray.
Robert Cray, precinct two, again. We're seeing this amount requested for a study. Could we get some information on the total budget for the whole project and potential revenues? I'm seeing a request that, for everyone to pay for this, presumably of a town of 30,000, it's going to be a very limited number of people are going to benefit from those plots. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference, right along the aisle?
Good evening, Hillary King, precinct three, six, sorry. I think I must also disclose that I work for the Commonwealth's Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program that's currently administering the town's upcoming climate action and resiliency planning effort. Although it informs my comment on this article, I must emphasize that I don't represent the Commonwealth or MVP program here at all tonight. In watching the finance meeting, the project timeline and history laid out that in 1979, the town designated a portion of the property for future cemetery expansion, and 2019, town meeting approved to develop the concept plan, which is now presented tonight. And I have to note that I appreciate the thoughtful work and intentions of this master plan and understand the legal obligation to provide burial space for our residents. However, I do suggest we also consider a couple of other bullets in the timeline. One being the spring 2021 declaration of a climate emergency stating our resolution for net zero emissions and making healthy choices for our lands and future generations. And two, the climate action and resiliency planning effort voted on just this past spring to establish a way forward for our town government to reduce emissions and the impacts of climate change. Prospect Park is one of the largest contiguous forest properties, remaining so close to the center of town. And it's my understanding that our communities will require the conservation of large interconnected forests, which store greenhouse gas emissions to achieve net zero energy goals. Furthermore, there were some questions in the finance meeting on whether there could be incentives or alternatives for traditional burial that may require less space, which was also brought up here tonight. And I just wanted to stand up and note, it may make sense for the community to lean into the climate action and resilience plan scheduled to occur over the next several months as an opportunity to iron out some of these important details before getting too far along with design plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions, right up behind Mr. Schatzky? Good evening.
Okay, Sarah Lividini, 76-2, precinct five, or three, I'm sorry. I just, my husband and I were wondering, are mausoleums going to be a part of this plan?
Mr. Mizuka.
Mausoleums, like full above-ground burials?
Yes.
No. There's no plans for that right now. There will be columbarium space added for niches for above-ground cremation spots.
Okay. I just wondered because it seems like that would be a way to, you know, go up instead of out and that would save on some of the land. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, yes, to the rear in the middle?
Hi, Bridget Hilton, precinct seven. I wanted to ask a little bit, we're looking 50 years in the future at the potential burial practices of our town at that time. Was any research done into trends in burial right now? Other places around the country and the world are adopting more modern, more eco-friendly burial practices that don't require designating large swaths of extremely valuable for the living land that we have in our town for a burial site. And so, I want to know whether or not the town has done any research into kind of what the trends are in the funeral business, not funded by the casket makers? And also, what consideration has been given to other potential uses for that space? It's a beautiful park right now. My family loves to hike there and walk around. Nothing against the graveyard. I used to love to hike at the Mount Auburn Cemetery. It's great. But being that it is prime real estate here in town, have there been other considerations made?
Mr. Mizuka. Deferring to Mr. Howland.
Jeff Howland, so yes, our consultant has looked at the trends in the burials in which there'll be more different types of burials than there traditionally. So, they are giving us information from across the country and the Commonwealth. There is a trend to get away from full burials. So, this cemetery will have more or less full burials. I'll go a little history on this property. In 1976, when the town purchased this property, one of the uses that was looked at was affordable housing on this piece, along with recreational uses, uses for the cemetery expansion, and for water use. There is two water tanks at the top. So, there has been a lot of looking at this for different reasons or in different uses. When the building was torn down, the affordable housing piece was removed from consideration. Then it was always cemetery, recreation, and water use purposes.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Yes?
Hi, Shannon Wall, precinct seven. This piece of land is heavily used by the town, holds quite a bit of history as well. To see that it would only approximately be about 50 years of worth of other burial seems like a short-term plan. Looking at seeing if there's other alternatives that are being explored that might be less used as a recreational space for residents that would have a longer life, if you will, for this type of use.
Thank you. Mr. Mizuka.
I'm not sure I understood the question. Is it, so I mean, there could be future phases of cemetery within the same site? I'm not sure if that was the question you asked or not. So, this is just 23 acres of the 72-acre parcel?
Go ahead.
So, I guess that, that was the question, if this, will the property then will eventually be looked at for complete use of cemetery use? Or is there other land in town that could be considered that is not essential to the current residents today?
There has not been any other lands within town explored or studied for cemetery use at this time. Since this was designated, as Mr. Howland said, this has been the focus that's really ramped up since 2019 as we've run out of space across the street at Mountain View. But over the course of the next 50 years, as planning would begin for expansion, I mean, that could be an option.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Any new faces? Any fresh questions? Ms. Delgado.
Deb Delgado, precinct eight. I'm not a fresh face. I commented before. But we do need, in our town, spaces for burials. And we do need something for people that are in the military, that are being deployed and going to serve our country, that might want to have a burial plot in the town that they grew up in and consider their home. And right now, you can't buy that. And I personally know someone that, you know, was, is looking to purchase a burial site, but because we're so limited right now, they can't. So, if we had a site like this one opening up, then individuals like I described, would be able to purchase a plot in advance of being deployed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connor, you had a question?
I live in Shrewsbury. I want to be buried in Shrewsbury, and I want to be buried in the ground. I don't want to be cremated. I want to be buried. Can't buy a plot, won't be living more than 50 years. And this was done when I was fresh out of high school. And Prospect Street, the Masonic property, the main purpose for that purchase was for cemetery. And town meeting vigorously voted in support of it. The rest came over time. But the purpose of that purchase was for cemetery. And because of the location, abutting Mountain View. That was the purpose.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Yes? Wait a minute, Mr., hold on, Mr. Cray, yes, I'm sorry, first time. Good evening.
Anne Karen's, precinct seven. I just would like to say a few words on behalf of open space in Shrewsbury. We have very little of it, and this is one of the nicest pieces that we have. And I just want to say a word of, you know, yes, I understand we need some land for a cemetery, and you've got phase one here, 23 acres. I understand that. That's great. I would love to see that that phase one be the only phase. I know there's a lot of people who have worked very hard to make the rest of Prospect a destination for people to go to. And, you know, the Garden of Remembrance, there's people who have put a lot of time and effort into making it a place to go to and enjoy. And I would be sad to see it become completely a cemetery.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Mr. Cray.
I'm sorry, Robert Cray, precinct two. I just did want to hear back on the total project cost, nearest million dollars or something?
The estimate right now is about $5 million.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 11? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call this vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 12.
I move the printed motion under Article 12.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded under Article 12. Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends the passage of Article 12 by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizuka.
This article will allow the town to receive by gift 3 and 1/2 acres. That's currently a portion of 32 Old Colony Drive, which would be retained for open space at the request of the donor. There's no funding associated with this article. The balance of the property is being considered for development. The town does have a current easement off the end of Sword Street, so we would be able to access this parcel of land and an adjacent 3 and 1/2 acre parcel of open space that already exists.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 12? There was a plan provided in your packet. Further comments or questions on Article 12? Mr. Molina.
Jason Molina, precinct one. In reference to the parcel-
In reference to the parcel that the easement's on, so it says, apart from the Selco easement, but there's also the 40-foot-wide easement to the town of Shrewsbury for all street purposes as delineated on the mentioned plan, blah, blah. Would there have to be a road in order to access it, or does this give you clearance to have a trail, or a sidewalk, or some other walking path to access that?
Mr. Mizikar.
It doesn't have to be a full roadway.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 12? Yes. Good evening.
Christopher Tigliano, precinct 7. So this is abutting, so this property, abuts my property. And I'm just wondering, so if this becomes open space, along with parcel 25 is open space, would this also mean that this could be made into a cemetery? Fair question?
No.
Mr. Mizikar.
No, no, open space under these purposes. Well, first of all, the land adjacent to is a wetland, so we wouldn't put a cemetery in a wetland. But it's my understanding that that would not be permissible as, once it's designated as open space. I can be correct if I'm wrong.
Is that correct?
Mr. Medaus, is there something to add to that?
No, I agree with the town manager's statement. I think cemetery use is not open space use. And this is before town meeting to restrict the property to that use, consistent with the donor's intent.
Thank you.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 12? Not seeing or hearing any on Article 12, we'll call the vote a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 12 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 13.
I move the printed motion under Article 13.
Was it seconded?
Sorry.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article 13 by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article seeks the use of $200,000 for a fee acquisition or a taking and use of those funds for an open parcel, roughly 5,200 square acres of land along Chase Terrace within the community. The vision for this parcel of land would be to enhance pedestrian connectivity and parking for the town center and the patrons thereof. This is a unique opportunity where this parcel of land was split off and a vacant lot was created. It was split off of a portion of 12 Chase Terrace. The town contacted the former owner when it was put on the market on or about September 27. It was listed originally for $150,000. Since that time, the property has sold. The current owner closed on the property on October 4 and acquired it for $165,000. The plan is to make an offer to the current owner, given the market price and the value. If we're not successful, this vote would authorize the Board of Selectmen to consider an order of taking for this. Happy to answer any questions about orders of taking, or have deferred those to Town Council.
Further comments or any comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Questions or comments with reference to Article 13? Yes, sir. Good evening, Paul. Good.
Paul Zeikis, precinct 1. I find it kind of ironic that this is actually coming to town meeting. The Board of Selectmen, the Select Board assured us that they had discussed the issue with respect to Beal thoroughly and completely. And now we want to purchase a 5,000-square-foot parcel for $200,000 to potentially be used for parking, because we don't have adequate parking, because we sold our biggest asset in the center of town, nearly four acres, for $250,000? That's somewhat worrisome. I think the, and for context, for context, this site is about 30, Beal is about 32 times the size of this site. 32 times. So there were hundreds, many of you in this room, hundreds of people in town that petitioned the board to hear them out, to allow them to speak on this issue, and they were deprived of that opportunity. And it's unfortunate, because there were many good ideas and concepts out there, one of which was widely publicized and exchanged and out there with respect to ensuring that we cut at least a portion of this off for public parking. So I think now to come back to us and have the taxpayers foot the tab for something, a parcel that could arguably benefit the developer, who's going to put 55 acres, 55 units, rather, right next to, next to this parcel, is something that the Select Board assured us, they had studied this comprehensively over an extended period of time. They were professionals, the whole nine yards swore up and down that this was a done deal, confident. And now we're coming back to the table. I think the entire analysis and the process has been flawed, and to support this article is simply just going to be a continuation of that. I think many of you probably remember when we bought 52 Holden Street, back when we were developing the high school many years back. The town never ended up using that site. They went out to bid with it twice, weren't able to sell it. Ultimately, it was sold, and after probably three, four, or five years, it's, we don't want to subscribe to the philosophy of buy high, sell low. Now, I know there'll be a defense of, oh, well, Beal was on the site, and we didn't want Beal. Well, look, it's not $1 million. It's $310,000 to take Beal down, put out by the Selectmen, this information in the hazardous materials identification study. So even if you take that $500,000, add it to the $250,000, we're still 10, 12 times we're paying. I mean, so we're selling stuff for peanuts, and now we're paying top dollar. We're gonna, this property's already been sold. It went on the market for $150,000. It was sold for $165,000 over asking price, and now we're going to buy it from that, from that new buyer. It's just terribly awkward. It's a very small parcel, and if we had the foresight, we would have retained all or a portion of the Beal site, so that we could ensure the success of the town businesses in adequate parking, not come back to the table at this time. Thank you.
Few further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Yes, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Moira Miller, precinct 1. I'd like to cite two plans, studies that have been done by the town of Shrewsbury, one in 2018 and one in 2021, both of which mentioned the Chase Terrace property and the potential for that property to be used as part of the visioning for what the town center might be. The first is the, excuse me, 2018 Town Center Parking Management Plan was developed as part of the Mass Downtown Initiative Program Grant. Input from businesses, residents, and visitors to town was all taken. One of the findings, one of the key findings in that study was to expand public, the public parking supply. No surprise to any of us that visit the town center. A specific recommendation was Recommendation 6, which was to enhance the walking conditions between parking and destinations. And they make a very important point, pardon me, I'm sorry. I got a cough here. It's not COVID. Everyone, but they point out that parking, we all talk about, we need more parking, we need more parking. But once people park, everyone's a pedestrian after they park. All right? And so we need to provide safe, comfortable, well-lit conditions to and from centralized parking facilities. The Beal project was not meant to be the be-all and end-all of solving parking and walkability issues in the town center. One cited example in the Town Center Parking Management Plan was, and I'll quote, "For the Beal School Lot, it will be important to consider walking connections such as Chase Terrace along Main Street and Maple Ave and Haskell Street." And one of the key findings for utilization in this report, or this study, was that on- and off-street utilization increases 60% to 100% along our Main Street between Chase Terrace and Grafton Street during the dinner hours, which begin at 6:00 PM. And then I'd like to cite the 2021 Rapid Recovery Plan, which was done as part of the, the governor's, a plan to help cities recover from the COVID pandemic. A committee of town staff and residents was put together to develop this plan. The project, again, another key recommendation, mentioned Chase Terrace. Realign Chase Terrace and add pocket, parket, slash, public space to Main Street. This particular item was in reference to the possibility of rerouting egress as part of the Beal redevelopment, because there's limited visibility for egress onto Main Street from Chase Terrace. Again, the idea being to make it walkable. With pending redevelopment of the Beal School, the town is in a unique position to facilitate redesigning to traffic pattern and create a pedestrian plaza to improve visitor experience. And again, I quote from this, "This project has the potential to serve as a catalyst to economic development and growth in the town center." So I point these out, because this isn't something that has just come up. The opportunity to purchase the property has come up, and it has been cited several times as a key component to what we're trying to accomplish in our town center, which is not only more parking, but walkability and a place that people are comfortable and feel safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
That's fine. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Anybody new? Mr. Molina.
Jason Molina, precinct 1. Is the, two questions. One is the size of parking that can be housed in this space. Is that going to be guaranteed to be focusing on, let's say, this thing can net, I don't know, 50 parking spots, making it up. Are we going to guarantee this could be 50 public spots by this purchase? That's my first question.
Yeah, any town created, the town will own, retain, and develop this parcel for parking and pedestrian mobility purposes, so there'll be public parking.
Well, because the article's focusing on this being integrated into the plan. So I want to, I want to make sure that this investment's integrating into what we want, not what the developer wants to do for their resident.
Yeah, any plan that's referenced is the, is the vision for the town center, not just the redevelopment of 1 through 7 Maple Avenue.
Gotcha. Thank you. And the second question is, where's, what's the next venue that residents can voice their opinions, or any input into the designing, or any of the whole 1 through 7 Maple?
Mr. Mizikar.
Kristen, answer.
Ms. Lass.
Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager. I just want to make sure I understand your question. You asked is, when is the next public venue for people to comment on the 1 through 7 Maple Avenue redevelopment?
Yes.
That would be at the planning board process, when the developer comes to the planning board with their site plan approval and special permit documents. I anticipate that that will be within the next month or two.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to this article? Just a second. Let's see if we've got anybody new. Yes. Oh, hold on. Completely new. Right in the middle.
Was any, sorry, Emma Sanamzar, precinct 7. Was any consideration given to acquiring the laundromat in the center of town and turning that into a parking, parking lot? Because it seems like a larger lot, and the building itself has a lot of issues, and it would serve as a great parking lot, because you can't really build anything on it or develop a business because of all the contamination from the laundromat.
Mr. Mizikar.
So that property is definitely front and center on our radar. Over the last six or eight months, we were working with someone, a private individual, who was seeking to acquire the property from the current owner, which is kind of the best situation. They were looking to redevelopment. Unfortunately, within the last few weeks, that person has backed out. It does have a lot of environmental contamination, and there's a rather rigorous process that we would have to go through. There's a number, a large amount of past due taxes on the property, so the town would be in a position to take it by tax title. But we've been hesitant to do so because of the environmental contamination inherent risks for that. So certainly a larger parcel than this one. It's something that has been discussed many, many times.
Follow-up?
Are the environmental issues even relevant if you're just going to pave over it and make it a parking lot?
They are, because they can flow off the property, you know, onto other properties, because they're within the ground itself.
Gentlemen in the aisle. Evening.
Hi, I'm Mike Viso, precinct 2. I have a question. Is that slated just for parking, the property that you're planning on taking at Chase Terrace? If so, that's a tough way to get it in and out to park. You know, it's like a little narrow section. It looks like it's going to be tucked away behind the buildings. And also, how many parking spaces are you looking at?
So the vision for the site is for pedestrian access and parking. We don't have a specific plan yet. We don't, I mean, the property's been, hasn't even been, wasn't even on the market for 20 days at this point. We're moving as fast as we possibly can. You know, the only way for town to acquire properties that come through this process. So we don't have a definitive plan. That would have to be, we'd have to invest dollars into that after we determine if we can acquire the site.
And the rebuttal is also, what else, if it wasn't for parking, if it was privately owned, what could be put in that, it's a small space, what could be put in there?
Ms. Lass, answer that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So under the town center district zoning, which town meeting approved in August of 2020, a single-family home, a duplex, or some sort of commercial use or mixed-use project could be put in that lot.
So if we could put a restaurant in there, that would actually be good. They could have their own park, and we don't have to purchase it. We save the money, and they still have access to walk to the center of town. And then we look at the laundromat for public parking.
I don't believe you'd get a restaurant to fit on that parcel of land. It's 5,000 square feet, so.
Never been in the North End?
I have, yes. I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 12? The gentleman to my left, that's you, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Adler, precinct 1. One of the joys of not being on finance committees, I don't have to pay attention to anything anymore. So I come to this not really understanding at all what's going on here, until Paul introduced us to it, which, thanks, Paul, for keeping us on it. So I looked at this when it came in the mail, and I'm like, why is there this square piece of land next to Beal? I thought this land was being, the whole Beal project was getting sold. And according to the article, it looks like it's either that project, the question for this square piece is that the town will either buy it or use the money for taking eminent domain. And I guess it's to enhance the Beal project, to make that better for a developer. But then, if it's, if we're going to be buying it outright, then it sounds like, why can't the developer buy this land? Why are we buying it for the developer's benefit? Which reminds me of Adam, the Adams Farm property, like, why are we buying something that might not work out? Or if it's for eminent domain, why are we taking something that's supposed to be for the public good just to help a developer? Like, that's not what eminent domain is for. Eminent domain is to help the public good, not to help a developer develop his or her or its business. Like, that's not how I see eminent domain being used. So perhaps, since, like I said, I came into this with really fresh ears, fresh eyes, can perhaps folks up on stage explain this a little bit better? What is the intent? Why are we doing this? How did we come into this situation? And what are you asking us to do? And what if this doesn't happen? Really, that, and that's always the question I ask when every single article comes up at town. up at town meeting. If this gets defeated, what's going to happen? What's the harm in it not happening? Thank you.
Mr. Mizuka.
As I stated before, the, the purpose of acquiring this lot is to enhance pedestrian mobility and create parking within the town center. We're cognizant of the redevelopment of one through seven Maple Avenue, the former Beal School. This has nothing to do with that developer or this development. It's not to benefit that developer. It's to fulfill and continue to fulfill the vision that was established by this community for the town center. So there's, and none of my comments did I say anything about benefiting a developer or not benefiting a developer. This is about creating pedestrian mobility. Ms. Miller probably did a heck of a lot better job of explaining the full vision for the town center than I did, but this is an ongoing process. I believe that most of the community wants a revitalized town center, bustling businesses, a place to go and congregate and come together as a community. At least, that's what we heard during the strategic planning process. As opportunities present themselves, like this one did, where a vacant parcel of land has come on the market, we're trying to react to that and carry out the vision that the community has asked us to do. So that's what we're looking to do with this parcel.
Further comments or questions with regard to Article thirteen, right down front.
Chementon, uh, precinct seven. In the five thousand square foot lot, how many cars can be placed?
Kristen, you're on.
I'm going to defer to DPW Director Howland for a rough estimate.
Mr. Howland, your estimate of the number of spaces that could be responsibly placed on this parcel?
Between eight and ten.
One might say nine.
It's kind of depending on the width.
Follow-up.
So, are we going to pay, charge for parking if we purchase this parcel for the ten parking spaces?
No.
Okay.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article thirteen? Looking for new people? How are you this evening? Could you speak up, Carol?
Carol McWilliams, precinct one. I had promised myself not to say anything tonight, but after listening to this little go-around, I'm just wondering how much of the responsibility of what we're talking about as far as walkability and, um, traffic should fall on that, the, the developer of the Beal project? Usually when a developer comes into town, they do whatever they can to, to appease the townspeople. And I think some of this that we're discussing tonight, let them buy the parking, let them restructure whatever the project's going to be, so there's more parking at, at the Beal project. I don't know, I think there's a lot to think about here. Um, and two hundred dollars, a thousand for ten parking spots doesn't seem to make any sense to me.
Mr. Howland, I think, has a point of clarification.
Uh, I did my, redid my math, it'd be between fourteen and sixteen, and it's kind of depending if we can get the handicap, if we go to sixteen, we need handicap spaces, so that actually eliminates a space because of the handicap aisle that's required.
Okay. Further questions or comments with reference to Article thirteen? Any new? Right in the middle.
Garnett, precinct two. I just want to remind everybody that we're hearing a lot of back and forth about what happened with the Beal project and the sale thereof. That is, in the past, um, we did what we did, and that was to revitalize the center. That was not just one project. That was for the center of town and to jumpstart the center. I don't know how many of you have driven through there recently. When I was a kid, we had a lot of things to do up there. We could go to the San Adary Bar, we could go to the Shushri Pizzeria, we could go to a lot of places up there. There's not a lot to do up there right now. We would really like to see some stuff for our kids to do up there. Not my kids, mine are grown, but my grandkids. Let's see what we can do here and be a little more positive. I understand it's two hundred thousand dollars, and our taxes are going up leaps and bounds everywhere, but if this pro, all we see, yes, I know I run the Shushri page and I see every single thing, but all I see is people complaining about, we can't get through the center of town because, you know, the state took away, made the sidewalks wider. And if you look at the two buildings at the center of town, they are completely vacant, with the exception of Willie's, Amici, and I think one other place. Other than that, they're vacant. There is nothing to go to at the center of town, for the most part. So let's try and be a little more positive here and encourage some, some business to come to town, whether it's a ten parking spaces, fifteen parking spaces. We need them to encourage other businesses to come to our center. We need business up there, because if we don't have business up there, then no other businesses are going to want to come there. They're empty. Nobody can rent them out up there, because there is no parking. So even if we have fifteen extra parking spaces, that's fifteen that we're not going to have, and that's less businesses. All people keep saying is, we're not, we can't rent out the, the, oh, the newest one. People can't pick up their pizzas at the pizzeria, because there's no parking. Well, maybe this will help somebody get their pizza. So let's encourage this a little bit more, please.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article thirteen and the parcel on Chase? Anybody new on this one? Didn't I see a hand over here? Judy?
Uh, we absolutely need more parking in the center of town. However, from listening to the conversation, we do have, I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that we have a known contaminated site. And so I got to ask, if we could take that parcel for back taxes, have we done any, do we, have we done any analysis to have a ballpark of what it would cost to clean up the site? The reason why I bring this up is...
Judy, that's a separate parcel.
No, no, I'm getting to why it's related. We're talking about spending two hundred thousand dollars for about, um, fourteen parking spaces. So what I'm wondering is if we don't buy this, but if we take that parcel, uh, from back ta, taxes, put the two hundred thousand, and we're talking about towards the cleanup, I know that's probably not going to be the total cleanup, but what would be the incremental cost on top of that? Um, I think that we would have better in-and-out access, uh, for the parking. I, I would ask if that wouldn't, in the long run, give us more parking? Uh, not to mention, I think it's kind of irresponsible to leave a brown site or a contaminated site in the center of town.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article thirteen?
Actually, I'm looking for an answer. I don't, I don't want you to just move on, please, Mr. Moderator.
What was the question?
The question is, has there been any analysis what it would cost to clean up that site?
The site on Main Street?
The one where the dry cleaner was, yes.
Mr. Mizuka? Just a second. Do you have the answer?
I can.
Go ahead, Mr. DePaulo.
There's two parts to the, uh, two parts to the answer. A while back, we had a rough estimate of about two hundred thousand dollars to clean the site. If we kept it, if we cleaned it and kept the site, then we have long-term liability for the contamination, because there's still long-term liability with the contamination on that site. Beyond that, we have back taxes there for around three hundred thousand dollars. If we take that land and we remediate it and we keep it for the town, we're also out to three hundred thousand dollars. We are better to work with this, uh, investor, the person, uh, investor, the person who wants to buy it and put something there, and work with them, and take a little while longer, and try to get them to go in there, do what needs to be done. They've talked to us about, they understand they have to pay the back taxes, and work out a plan with them and get it done. Then for us to take that land, to put a parking lot in, and spend something in the order of five hundred thousand dollars. So that, that, you know, it's, it sounds easy to just take it, say, take it and, you know, knock it down and clean it up. That type of site is a very difficult site. That's why it sat there for so long. So you, would we do it if it, if it was economically feasible for us? And if it gets to the point where, say, this person in particular doesn't work? Yeah, maybe we will have to do something like that, but that's not our first choice. We understand what it looks like. We, we, we live here too, we understand it. But the best thing to do is to get somebody to buy it and remediate it and work with them.
So I would say there is one way to calculate, um, the cost-benefit of moving on that parcel as opposed to this parcel. Or potentially, we should move on both parcels, because obviously we do need parking in the center of town. But I think there's a lot of different ways to do the math of what the, the cost-benefit to the town is to clean up what we know to be a contaminated site in the center of town. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article thirteen? Anyone new? Yes, a new one right on the aisle there.
Is that the old Vernon Drugstore property available for, to be bought?
No, it was just, it was just purchased.
Uh, not, what is it called?
Hale.
Hale.
Walgreens.
Walgreens.
It's just Castle.
Hey, there you go.
Opportunity.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions with reference? Did I see a gentleman behind? No? Yes, sir.
Anand Sharma, precinct nine. And I look at every hip, everyone talking about that this property is not a kind of a good property for purchase, purchase by the town. I would suggest, and I would like to tell you, everyone here, you should not go for that one. You will don't have any benefit. We have to, we are not the business of the town, not have the business like dealing with those kind of things. We have to deal with, or we have to come with some different ideas to create the parking or upgrade the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments or questions? Anyone new?
Brian Gimboris, seventy-one Camelot, precinct seven. I vote no here, and I urge you to vote no, too. This Chase Terrace Road is a terrible road for parking access. It's one lane, maybe. I find it hard, hard to believe people are going to go down there looking for ten spaces. It just doesn't seem worth it. I think the presentation here to encourage us to vote for this has been poor. There's no, um, guess at how this would fit into the new Beal property, if you will. Um, I have no idea what it would look like and what we're buying, we're spending our money on. Furthermore, I'm a little disappointed today, because multiple times, people have come up here to ask questions, and they've just been ignored. So I ask, please, moderator, listen to us. If we ask a question, we'd like to hear the answer. I think about three or four times you've missed that.
Well, I will tell you, if I have, uh, if I have not heard a question or responded, please call me on it, because I, I took some comments as comments. Um, if you had, if I don't give you the answer or offer you the opportunity, call me on it, by all means. Any call, any other, yes, right down the front, first time.
Hi, Carol Switek, precinct six. Um, I drove over there the other day, and I was surprised to see how narrow that street was to get in there. I also think it's going to be difficult to go in and out of that parking lot. Now, since we're buying it for public use, would we be able to leave that parking lot going toward the Beal property? Or would that all be exclusively up Chase Terrace?
Mr. Mizuka.
Well, we would work with the developer, if it makes sense, to have connectivity on both sides.
Okay.
Further comments or questions from anyone new? Yes. No, I realize, but she's also spoken several times. I'm looking for the new people. Go ahead.
Bridget Hilton, precinct seven. I didn't speak on this issue yet, just to be clear, um, but thank you for calling on me. Um, I wanted to say two things. Um, one is, if we leave the dry cleaner there, the brown site there, isn't there potential for that to contaminate the community just sitting there vacant, even without cracking the ground? We know that ground is contaminated. It seems to me that the best use of local governance is to protect our citizens in the long term, and leaving what I think many of us know to be a ticking time bomb there is problematic and scary, frankly. Um, I love that building, I think it's actually pretty cute, but the environmental concerns far outweigh the historical value of that cute little building. Um, the second thing is, part of my understanding of going through with the Beal deal at the price that we did, was to be able to have a certain degree of say in what happens in that property. And to me, that two hundred thousand dollar, I mean, you guys can pay me two hundred thousand dollars and park at my house, it's fine, you can walk to the center from there. But part of my understanding was, in having that deal with Beal at that price, was that we would have a little bit of input as a town as to what the use of that space was going to be. I heard Ms. Lass say that we are having the planning meeting coming up, I'm excited about that. Is that an opportunity to save our two hundred thousand dollars and maybe put it towards cleaning up that brown site? Or, and to get some additional parking at the Beal site? Is that a possibility still?
Mr. Mizuka.
So those are my two questions, and thank you.
I, I only heard one question, I'm happy to understand the, the second one. Uh, with regards to, uh, the one through seven Maple Avenue site, um, there are twenty dedicated public parking spaces, so the board has negotiated, the board, the select board has negotiated a full development agreement with a developer, includes seven tenths of an acre of open space, twenty public parking spaces on the private property, and then retaining all on-street parking along Chase Terrace, which is actually on private property as well. So, Haskell Street, excuse me. Yep.
Follow-up, hold on, get the mic.
The first question was, isn't the dry cleaner sort of a ticking time bomb, sitting in the center of town, contaminated with environmental race under the ground that could seep into our drinking water and poison our children?
Well, so, no. Um, it's not associated with our groundwater system that we use for our drinking water. Um, as I mentioned before, the board has been actively working to consider foreclosing on that property through the tax title prob, process. I have been working over the last six to eight months with a private individual who had a purchase and sales agreement, or some similar agreement on the property, and we were very hopeful that he would take ownership of that contaminated site. Private individuals have a lot more access to federal dollars and cleaning it up, and they assume the liability. Assuming liability is just that. So if there are contaminated sites associated with that, that falls to the town, and we're, we would become responsible for that. It's a big risk. It's something that we may have to do, but always, if a private developer, developer would take on that risk, it's what we would look to do. So that's what we've been doing for the last six months, working with a private developer. The prior four, uh, we've been working with the board to determine the risks and opportunities that we have, and working with our state partners to acquire the site and clean it up.
Mr. O'Connor.
I have a question. I have a question. We keep hearing about the liability. Can we get a little more clarity on how large that liability could be, and what the difference of that liability will be for a community like ours, government-owned, or versus if the private individual bought it and was, and he was affected? I do not think the town could do bankruptcy over a large private liability. Just one second.
Oh, we, excuse me. Oh, we, excuse me. We're getting away from the Chase question right now. So if I could ask, I think obviously the manager and the board have heard this evening the concern for the Main Street parcel. Let's go back to the Chase Street parcel and article as written this evening. There's still plenty of people who wish to speak on it. I see a, Dennis, okay?
Just to clarify all the questions on liability, which had already come up. It'd be interesting to know if there's a large liability or not for that property.
And I think that's best dealt with by, it's not asking people to answer a question they perhaps didn't come here this evening prepared to address, but rather giving them time to give the, the complete package so people either at a selectman's meeting or another forum get that complete thoughtful answer to that question on Main Street.
If you could have that answer at some point.
Absolutely, I'm sure the manager and the board will be following up on it. Did I see a hand up in the middle? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Phil Blumberg, Precinct 9. My question, you know, I appreciate the, the board and the town, you know, trying to revitalize the center. It sounds like maybe a parking lot's not the best use for that particular lot. I mean, is it possible it could just be like a small park? Thank you.
Mr. Mizuka?
It absolutely could just be a small park. We're, we're trying to, again, carry out the vision, address parking issues in the town center and enhance pedestrian mobility. So walkway, lighted walkways, you know, decorative street lamps that are mirrored on, on Maple Avenue. And, and to the prior comment that, you know, the town wasn't very prepared, you know, to illustrate our vision for that site, we don't have plans. We don't, we couldn't turn those around from the time that it went on the market to get something to you this evening. I'll just reiterate, it was put on the market on September 27th, literally the day that the Board of Selectmen signed the warrant. We put it on the warrant and are trying to illustrate our vision in, in coordination with the work that has been done by this town over the last three to five years for the town center. So we have not invested in plans on, on a property like this yet. So I apologize if you don't think we're prepared, we're just trying to react in the marketplace. But we all know government's slow. To buy a piece of land, we have to go through a process like this, so.
Follow up, sir.
Yeah, could you just talk a little more about exactly how it would improve pedestrian mobility? I'm not exactly sure what that means.
Sure.
Mr. Mizuka?
So it would allow connectivity between the 1 through 7 acre parcel to the rest of the downtown, or town center area. And again, this is one strategic acquisition over a very long-term game, right? Local government, we play a very long-term game, how can we best revitalize the town center? It's going to be incremental, it's going to be pragmatic. So having an additional way for pedestrians to be able to move from that public parking that's on the Beal site, the pocket park, the seven tenths of an acre that'll be at the corner of Haskell and Wesleyan, and, and go to Amici's or Willie's, or hopefully whatever else will be in the Hale block as restaurants, would just give them a shorter walking distance, parking centrally located to both of those features. So it, it's just going to, to complement, like I said, it would be, you know, more than likely a lit walkway, many modes of transportation, getting people off of Maple Avenue.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 13? Mr. Zikos?
I'd like to thank everybody for their thoughtful participation. Quick question, and, and there's been a lot of issues that have come up in this discussion, so I think it's healthy, but recently, the Hale Drug Walgreens sold for $970,000. As I understand it, that property's going to be leased by the school committee. Would these parking spots be used by the school committee? Or are the program, that, that, let's say, the tenant of Hale Drug?
Well, it'd be public parking, so we're not going to restrict who can or can't park there. To be honest with you, the vision for that building is because it's more of a traditional business hours operation that the school is likely to put in there, that we'd be able to utilize parking that's on that site for other patrons on off-hours when they're not open.
And with respect to, I know we, we want to get off the cleaners, but with respect to the cleaners, I'm familiar with the TransAct Mr. DePaolo references, that TransAct A is dead.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I said.
No, my, my reference is to Mr. DePaolo's comment that we would rather sell that parcel. It's been for sale for, for years. And when the town takes it by tax title, that account zeros out. So once judgment issues from Land Court, that's a zero balance. Also, I wanted to thank Ms. Miller for referencing the two studies that clearly made a point about the need for parking in the center of town, which proves our point. Since you're not through the planning board process on Beal, can you negotiate a better deal with them, right? So in the perfect world, rather than having this, this parcel be paid for by the town and the, the private developer having the benefit of that, let the, let the private developer buy it. Let Amici's buy it, let the people who own the block building buy it, let the pizzeria buy it. Any of those people, as business people, they know what their margin is, they know what they need to do to build business, and they can invest in it. One of the single biggest arguments that this board made with respect to the sale of Beal School to a private entity was tax revenue. Tax revenue, right? Everybody wanted that tax revenue. Everybody wanted that tax revenue. It was, we have it on video, it was one of the single biggest arguments. And now we're going to buy property, we're going to make it nonprofit, and we're going to lower our tax base. So I think if businesses want that, let them buy it. But to work with the developer, unless you're negotiating some kind of transaction, already the public parking that's there isn't really public parking because it's owned by the private developer that's assigning it as public parking. So it's likely that the residents of those 55 units and their guests are going to use that parking as well. So I think it's important that you look at renegotiating that transaction in some way, and that might be enough to, you know, maybe, maybe as a good faith effort, they pay the $200,000. They bought that site for peanuts anyhow, I don't think it changes the pro forma very significantly. Maybe that's something that would allow them the opportunity to be a good steward of the community and a good partner in the community, and it could likely avoid the potential for an appeal, which at this stage, based on communication with the neighbors, is highly likely in addition to some other issues which council is aware of.
Let's come back to-
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to, hold on, guys. Ms. Deering?
Martha Deering, Precinct 4, and I move the question.
Motion has been made to move the question, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to move the question. This is, we will move immediately to the voice vote requiring a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of moving the question, which will end debate and move us right to the vote on the article, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We will now move right to Article 13. Article 13 is before you. All the, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 13 shall indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It does not receive the two-thirds. We have no other items to come before us this evening, is there a motion to adjourn? Hold on. Hold, hold on, wait a second. What was that? The, the losing side has asked for a standing vote. Are there six people who would stand with the gentleman? I don't see six, oh, I see six hands now. Okay. So we will now move to a standing vote. Tellers, please take your position, please, everyone remain seated other than the tellers. What we will do now is move to a standing vote on Article 13. This requires a two-thirds vote. Once the tellers tell me they are in position, I will ask the ayes to stand. We'll take that vote, the, the tellers will report to the town clerk. We'll then go through the same process for the noes. Are the tellers in position and ready? Yes, okay. On Article 13, all those in favor of Article 13, please stand and be counted by the tellers. Please remain standing until the tellers come and report to the town clerk.
I have nine. I have nine. Nine in favor?
Can you hear? Please come right up, and then we'll repeat what you're reporting. Nine in favor. Twelve in favor. Thirteen in favor. Ten in favor. Would you please, all the ayes, sit, please, and allow the tellers to get back in their position? Are the tellers in their position? All right, would all of those who are voting no on Article 13, please rise and remain standing for this count? What were you reporting? Twenty-three. Forty-two. Ten, no. Twenty-seven, no. Our clerk will tally the vote. So as a result of the standing vote on Article 13, we had 53 stand in the affirmative and 104 in the negative. The two-thirds is not achieved. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.